At 7:02 PM, if everybody would rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Rory, did we receive, did we receive any public comment?
We did not.
Is there any public here?
There is not.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the December 16th, 2020 regular meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Bob, second by Trish. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Motion moved. For our select woman's report. Couple things. As you know, you've probably seen on the news about the fish bypass in the Kenny Town Dam. No, sorry, Kenny Town, Tig new dam, which is really Kenny Town. We've been going on and on. The Valley Cock has been going back and forth. With the power line, the power company that is there now. We just received a request for an easement and Brian, you can correct me if I'm wrong at any time. An easement for them to start storing equipment there so they can start repairing the dam. So they can get the letter, the ladder fixed. That was from the DEEP, correct, Brian?
That is correct. That's an easement to the state of Connecticut from DEEP over and across land of the town. To, you know, put a fencing if necessary to stockpile materials, put equipment, access the dam, remove any brush they might need to get in there. And it's a temporary construction easement and they will restore the area when they are done with it.
And then they will be repairing the fish bypass as well. Go ahead, Bob. I know you want to ask a question.
No, I was just, I was really going to ask, what's the timeline? What, what's the expected timeline on that and everything?
So the, they know where they have to fix, fix over by the fish bypass. So they said that they can do that even in the winter time. The easement is for, I think, 18 months. Or 180 days, I'm sorry, 180 days is what the easement is for. But the fish bypass can be repaired even in the wintertime because what they have to repair, they can put a tent over. To get over and that's the area over by the C2 area. As far as Route 67, Holbrook Road easements from the DEEP. I believe Rory said that those came through. Chuck Lee is either sunning them down or they came through. So that project should be taking place in spring. Holbrook Road should be getting done in the spring. Though Public Works will be busy over there with trees. Very proud of the Board of Finance as well as Doug Thomas. We received our six calf award. So a big thank you to the Board of Finance and Doug, Doug Thomas on that. We're in the middle of budget meetings. They're taking place. Soon as we have our budgets together, I'll be presenting it to the board as well as the Board of Finance. Sure you have known, as you've seen on the Valley Indy and on the Facebook, there's been a lot of break-ins and car thefts in the town. The police department is, has been amping up their patrols throughout the town areas. If you feel your area needs to be a little bit more patrolled. Please call Chief Zakowski while they do it. But a lot of it is because people are leaving their keys in their car. We've had a couple from Honey Penny where the people will be pumping their gas, leave the keys in the car, run into the store. Keys, cars are left unlocked in your driveway. The best way to deter somebody from doing something is making search secure. So lock your doors. We put out a statement, lock your doors, put an alarm on, help yourself. Basically, what we're doing. I still can't believe Bruce isn't in yet. Um, I think that is all I have. From our selectman's report. Okay. Item number six, discussion and take possible action regarding the Tig new dam easement. As I said in my board's, my selectman woman's report, in your packet, we have a temper. Construction easement. Brian, do you want to go into this one?
Yeah, I'll talk about it briefly. It's Brian Leclerc from the town attorney's office. The version you have in your packet has an error as proposed by the state of Connecticut. They have language in there that this easement, an easement is a right of way over property for a certain purpose, for a certain period of time. It's different than indeed, it's only a right to pass and repass over the property. This specifically is to the state of Connecticut to pass over land of the town of Seymour about 8,000 square feet. For the sole purpose of repairing that dam. It lets them cut trees and brush as necessary, install any construction fencing necessary. To bring in men and equipment, survey equipment to stockpile materials, to park their construction equipment, et cetera. To repair that bypass dam. They also agree to restore the easement to the area as it exists right now before they begin the project. The state has language in here proposing that this terminates 180 days after completing the repairs. I think they mean to say 180 days after this date. Otherwise, they will complete the repairs with no end date and then have six more months, which makes no sense. Why would they have an easement when they're done? So we're going to make that correction to the state and send it back to the attorney general's office and have them. And have it signed with that correction.
Finley, you're muted.
Sorry, sorry. The goal of that would be that that repair would have to occur within the 180 days. Is that, that's the intention that you're changing it to?
I assume that's their intention. The way they wrote it makes no sense for the easement to be temporary terminating 180 days after the repairs to the dam. If they have, if this is going to take longer, we should know it now and make the easement, you know.
Yeah, so we would want to know the starting point of when they would want to start and then the, the time period they want to act.
Exactly. Because the way they're proposing it, there is no starting date. They could start and this project could go on for years.
That's why I asked the question before, right?
Okay, exactly, yeah.
Can I have a motion to take possible action and discussion?
I'll make that motion. Only with the stipulation upon council gets those items corrected in that we have a specific start, a specific start date to. Selectment Finley's comments.
And I will, I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Pat, second by Bob. Discussion, basically discussion is to make sure that we have a start and finish date as select and Finley stated. Any other stipulations? Can we ask them to have a timeline?
Yeah, you know, I think the start date is the date of the easement. Because we, you know, the easement is going to be effective as of the day we give it to them. It's more important that you folks get a completion date on this than a start date.
Yeah. Right, yeah.
So if it's six months, I assume that's an acceptable period of time for them to do this, especially if they're working over the winter. That would seem reasonable. And if not, we can come back with those.
Yeah, I agree. If the start date is the day of the, of the document, yes.
So I'll propose that it's six months, 180 days from the date of the document. If they need longer, you know, nine months, a year, whatever, we'll come back in two weeks with this and, and have that discussion with you folks.
Can I have a vote? All in favor? My three ayes. Nays?
Aye.
No, Rob, okay. Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Oh, Bruno, you, you're going to join us? Guess not, next. Discussion and take possible action regarding the grand light tax abatement application. So I guess I will sign this when you come in. Brian, I have to sign this.
We, we have to, we have to give you an amended version first, Madam, for select woman.
In your package, you have a. Well, first let's, let's take a motion to discuss and take possible action regarding the grand light tax abatement application.
All moved.
Get motion by Patrick, second by Al. Okay, discussion. Rory?
Sure. So this was actually, you guys have already approved. If you remember. Typically, a company will apply to the tax abatement program before construction starts to get a kind of pre-approval from the board of selectmen. And so the board of selectmen has already granted that for this project. What this is, is now that the project is complete and it was delayed because of COVID. They were initially anticipating a completion somewhere around April. But this is their final accounting of their project. And so what you guys will typically do is take a look at. The total amounts and the brackets in the tax abatement plan and approve an abatement in a percentage for a duration of time. And so I will just. Highlight a couple of things that I've. In conversations with the owner of the company that he pointed out that are relevant to the tax abatement policy. Bear with me one moment. And so. Essentially. This column, column B is the budgeted amount. Column H here is the actual for the project. Some of the expenses that are listed here are not eligible for the program. This would include, you know, attorney's fees and survey fees. The tax abatement program specifies that it has to be improvements to the property. Some of the things that are in addition, they list the permit costs. The tax abatement program grants the board the authority to waive any or all permit fees if they so deem. And then the program recommends that the board take into account whether local contractors are used. And so. In conversations with the owner. They use several. The. Let's see. The landscaper that was used is a Seymour based business. The excavator is Seymour based, one of the electrical contractors as well as the surveyor. And he also mentions that as a result of this project, which was an expansion of their facility. They added two part-time employees at three days a week and one full-time employee. So these are all parts of the project. As you can see. I just did some quick math with the eligible expenses. So the, the total for the project that's eligible should be. This number right here, 264. And per the tax abatement policy. Sorry, just give me one moment, I want to confirm. The bracket. That this falls within is. 50,000 to 500,000 essentially. And so the abatement that is allowed per the program is 30%. No less than 30%, I'm sorry, no greater than 50%. And the timeframe shall be three years.
Any discussion? I can't see everybody on my screen for some, there we go, sorry.
I just had one quick question, Emery.
Go ahead, Bruno.
So Aurora, the number you had highlighted, the 264, there are a couple of the numbers underneath it. That said, total, are those not the accurate numbers? Because that's just a tally for the rest of the Excel grid cells? Or you're sure that 264 is right?
Correct. The owner included some of the ineligible expenses. The other, the other part of this is you guys, if you, you know, approve this, I will request documentation of all of these expenses to ensure that they line up with what is laid out in the spreadsheet.
Okay.
And if they don't, you know, provided. That they don't differ too greatly. You know, if it's a couple of dollars, that's one thing. But if it's a, if it's a large amount, I would bring it back to you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. All in, any other questions? No? Are you ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
What is the, what is the exact motion?
A number between 30 and 50%. The plan leaves that open to you guys, so you'll need to specify that.
What usually deems that?
That was why I went into some of the, the factors that are included. There's a section in the plan that kind of lists out factors to be considered. One of those is whether and to what extent they utilize local contractors. The potential for increased economic development. How many new positions are created as a result of the work?
And it is, it sounds like they qualified in, in all areas when respective, they did use, I mean, over probably 70% of those contractors were Seymour. Or at least 60%, right? If I looked at it, I just looked at it quick, but.
Did they not use Seymour contractors because they weren't available in the area? Or any, did they provide any specification?
You know, so, so for example, just looking at the, the raw numbers. The building itself. Is about half of the expenses. That was not a local contractor. I don't know if that was a prefab or a, you know, it's just a Butler building. I think this is a warehouse type building. And so they didn't use a local contractor for that, but. You know, they mentioned excavation and that was a pretty sizable chunk. That was one of the Seymour contractors.
Landscaping, electric?
Excavation and the surveyor.
It says excavation Larry, 9500.
There, so the, the line I'm looking at is 21, which Griffin Brothers.
Excavation add, got it, okay.
So, you know, it, it's up to you guys again, the, the bracket that is in the plan goes from $50,000 investment up to half a million. And they, they fall right about in the middle of that. And the incentive that you guys are allowed in this bracket is between 30 and 50%.
So what have we done in the past? Or that would depend on the. Scope of what was being applied for?
Correct. You know, some of the more recent. Applications have been very large projects. But you know, over the 3 million. And so the board has been very generous with those very large projects. You know. I'm trying to think, there was, there was one other, I think, actually the most recent application was from another business. One in the industrial park and it was on the smaller end.
It wasn't Tully, right?
No, no, this was Emery Winslow. So. You know, it, it's up to you guys if. You know, they fall about, again, the, the bracket is 50,000 to 500,000 and between 30 and 50% abatement. You know, maybe since they fall about halfway through, you could look at 40 as a base and then increase it from there as you see fit. Due to local contractor use and expansion of the workforce, those kind of other factors.
I was going to suggest we start at 40 and discuss from there because if it's not as large a product, project. But to, I think it was Pat who said it, I'd like to be somewhat fair where we can across the board. So it doesn't create any animosity with another company. And it's hard not knowing all that detail from all the prior work and being able to, it's kind of like comparing apples and oranges.
Yeah, this has to be less arbitrary and more fixed because I, you're, I go, you don't want to keep a consistent message across the board, you know?
Yeah. I also just want to keep, I mean, I, we have the program in place and I know a lot of the public doesn't understand it. I can't even say I have like 100% grasp of my hands around it. But we don't have a large business base. And I know there's always a question on why we're cutting, you know, some of the breaks. I understand the point of it. I think we should be doing it to keep businesses in town and provide them an incentive to be here. And at the same token, making sure that we're not, you know, we are looking at things fairly and providing. Not always providing the highest abatement possible, but doesn't really look like it warrants it based on all of the factors. So that's where I'm kind of suggesting the 40%.
You know, and it's been proven, just like by looking at Emery's scale, it's been proven. That this tax abatement did keep them, I'm sorry, Rob, did keep them in town because if they didn't get it, then they were leaving. Rob, sorry.
No, you're fine. Um, Rob Benagan, yeah, I, I absolutely see the points that are being brought up about moving forward, having something a little more concrete. Less arbitrary, so things can't be brought up later as to why one got more than the other. In this case, like Bob said, the boxes seem to all have been checked. I'm definitely in support of giving abatements to towns, to help companies, to help companies that are growing in Seymour. I want to keep them in Seymour. I want to send that strong message that we're going to do everything we can. A potential blowback is seeing that as people, as Trish mentioned, discussion about businesses that we have here. And I know we're in a, what's it, what's it called, not refinance time right now, reassessment.
Yeah.
And because of the market, I think a lot of homeowners are going to say, hey, everything went up. And that's just kind of timing. Sometimes it falls on a hot market, sometimes it falls on a bad one. But if something were to come of this, we're homeowners, say, how come you're helping them out and not the town as much? I would kind of want to stress the reason we're going to do this and the reason I'll push for, you know, the full 50 on this. And we want to have these things is to grow business and the more we can grow business, the better that's going to be able to perhaps help the mill rate moving forward, things like that. But in this case, yeah, they're checking all the boxes and we definitely want to help keep businesses here and growing in Seymour, so.
Rob, I support what you said 100%. I guess I'm just a little hesitant on the full 50 based on the size of the project in comparison to others. And in looking at how we've. Handled other similar, problem is we don't do these all the time, other similar projects. So I guess I'm just hesitant to take the full leap on the 50%.
Is somebody who's more mathematically inclined off the top of their head, you discussed with it? Maybe come up with some sort of scale, since this is between 50 and 500,000. And Rory said, you know, this kind of falls in the middle. We could do somewhere if somebody's doing 400,000, you know, they're more likely to get it at 45% or something like that. Is there some scale we can work off of?
I don't remember ever seeing a scale. Bob Finley, you're on mute.
No, yeah, the only thing I would warrant, but if they, you know, if they have a bigger project but use less Seymour, right? So we'd have to figure out how that would all balance. I just think we just have to, I, I'm like you, I'm looking at this saying, you know, because they take the boxes. Whether it's a small project or a large project, it's a COVID year. It probably best suited that we give them the benefit, the, the way it's structured today. But then as a board, we take a look at trying to make it more fixed and get more fixed approach. Because it should be cut and dry. We shouldn't have to be guessing or putting our own spin on it, you know?
I will mention the, the tax abatement policy was passed in 2012. So, yeah.
Maybe something we need to really revisit, you, you know?
So Trish, you threw out 40. Al, Bruno?
I just want to say that I was on that committee. John Conroy was the chair of the tax abatement committee, the last revision of this document and this incentive plan. And yeah, I mean, it's always good practice to go back and, and take a peek at it, revisit it, make sure it's still working for us as a community. But I could tell you that John had a lot of insight and really drove the process with this tax incentive. Document that we adopted as a community for our town businesses to try to retain them and keep those tax funds in town, those businesses in town. So. I think I'm in agreement with what you guys are saying, but I just want to give you a quick little history of that since I was on that committee. That's all, just wanted.
Can I just ask you a quick question?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I, I was, what was John, I trust John's feedback and judgment, really smart guy. But what was his idea as far as when the board of selectmen are, are making the decision? What was, I'm sure his idea wasn't to give everybody the, and not that I don't want to retain the businesses. I do agree we should, I agree with, with Rob, we should be doing something to goodwill, keeping businesses in town, helping them out. But I'm sure the idea wasn't to give everybody the max allowable. So I guess I just want to sense on what the plan was, what was the idea behind it? What was the hope on how it would be looked at? Given those factors.
Yeah, Trish, I, you know, this was nine years ago. I don't remember that kind of specific, but I know that we did not want to usurp the power of the board of selectmen with the plan. We always wanted to let the, the. The board with the governing power to discuss such things and make those decisions always have ultimate say and not just to, to Bob. To Bob Finley's point, not just say, all right, give them the max every time. So I think it's, we have to develop some kind of balancing test or something because it wasn't meant to just be, we do it every time across the board.
Right, so it shouldn't be arbitrary.
We, it might be time for Emery to appoint another committee to take a peek at it. And Rory should be on it because he's the one who's involved in it a lot of the times, I would think. I mean, I don't know, I'm just, just talking here and spitballing, but I think it's time to revisit it and see if it's still working for our community.
I agree.
That said, we do not have a lot of. Real estate in town, as we all know, to develop business. So we need to be very smart and be able to explain to our residents and the taxpayers why this plan is in place. It's a very logical thing to have in place, but sometimes, yes, we're not going to give the full amount. But the bottom line is without tax incentives, businesses can and will go elsewhere.
Right.
We love Seymour, but there's 168 other towns in Connecticut where they can go or out of state. So that's it, that's all I want to say.
Al, I didn't want to, I'm, I wasn't trying to knock the plan by any stretch.
No, I didn't take that.
I want to make sure that very clear, I want to be very clear on that. The only thing I was, we'd be wanting to do is make it more definitive, that's all. I don't want to have us be guessing and.
No, agreed. More definitive. Be guessing. That's a problem, right? So, you know, Bob Finley's business comes and we give him 20% or whatever. And then Rory's business comes, we give him 50 and they're similarly situated projects, you know, now we got a problem. Similarly situated expansion, whatever it may be, where that takes advantage of that tax incentive document. We, we can't have inconsistent results, that's.
Correct. That's, that's all I have.
Yeah, agreed.
We definitely need to look at that. I think based on all of that discussion though, I'm going to stick with 40%. Just. support of us not, I don't, there's, I've already, I don't need to repeat it. I think I'm just, I'm more comfortable sticking with the forty percent myself.
And it was thirty to fifty, the percentage range, right?
Yes.
That's right in the middle of it. I kind of liked the forty percent.
And, and I also, just every time one of these comes in, I have to reread the plan and I've probably read it through about ten times now, so I just sent you all a copy in your email, so you can review that and kind of get a better idea because I know it, every couple of months I have to reread it because the details escape me.
I am in agreement, though, Emery, you should probably set up a committee so we could provide some more consistency with this. And whoever's on the committee, I would still say we want to leave it, we should provide it to Rob's, to Bob's point, kind of set up, give us some guidance on what, not just what to look at, but how we want to make our decisions, but leave, also leave it loose enough so that if we're having a really bad year, we can change gears and we're not like stuck into one decision by too strict of a formula.
Right.
I agree. Thanks for chairing the committee, Trish.
I do believe that you get, from a percentage of project standpoint, using the Seymour, using Seymour businesses standpoint, you can get to an algorithm that would make complete sense. You put the data in, it gets you the result that you want. I.
Gets you a results for a recommendation, but we should agree to, Al, we're, you know, we do want to maintain that power for a variety of reasons. You don't want to get too stuck.
Well, yeah, yeah, no, it gets us to a talking point.
Right.
Why we're getting.
Exactly. Thank, yep.
So, what is everybody's thoughts and opinions on the forty percent? I, I like forty percent. We're not giving them the thirty percent and saying eh, but we're not also giving them the full fifty percent.
I would support forty percent.
Rob, are you feeling good?
That baby should be coming soon.
Yay.
Oh, yeah. Due date's the twenty-sixth.
Baby girl, baby boy.
Awesome.
Baby boy, based on the, her parents, he's going to have a huge head of hair.
All right. So can I have a vote on forty percent? To Grand Light Tax Abatement?
So you have, someone's got to make that motion, I think, for the forty percent.
Yeah, a motion on the floor. Yeah.
Got to put, so Pat made that move?
Yep.
Trish seconded, all in favor?
Hi.
Number eight, discussion and take possible action regarding the Religious Freedom Day proclamation. We apologize, Rory put the wrong town in proclamation in, but he did send us over the new one. Al Bruno, can you read that proclamation?
Sure. Proclamation Religious Freedom Day, January sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Whereas religious freedom was first among rights guaranteed by the United States Constitution to protect all people to think, express, and act upon what they deeply believe as long as they do not harm others. It is a fundamental human right and whereas religious freedom guards the people's rights to be able to express their beliefs or lack thereof openly without the fear of being denied equal rights. It protects individuals from religious discrimination in employment, housing, and other services. It prevents people from being denied the right to have a business occupation or professional license based on their identification or beliefs regarding religion and whereas freedom of religion principles should guide judicial decisions, legislation, and public policy at all levels of government such that the government may not favor one religion over another or atheism or agnosticism. And whereas in nineteen ninety-two, Congress designated January sixteenth as Religious Freedom Day to commemorate the January sixteen seventeen eighty-six enactment of the Virginia Statute for Religious Freedom authored by Thomas Jefferson. Now, now therefore be resolved that I, Emery Dragonis, for select woman of the town of Seymour, Connecticut, do hereby proclaim January sixteen twenty twenty-one as Religious Freedom Day. And witness thereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the town of Seymour, Connecticut to be affixed on the sixteenth day of January twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Al. And this will be a yearly proclamation. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Number nine, discussion and take possible action regarding Economic Development Director. And before anybody has a count, we only put the final, we're not hiring. It's still, as we suggested in our last minutes, we are still, we are still putting that on the side note, we're not hiring yet. But this was the final job description that we wanted to everybody to review, to give it our blessing. So when the time comes and we're ready to hire, we already have the job description in place. We all agreed upon it and we can just put it out there and there's no discussion on, well, we need to change this, let's look at it again, it's just ready to go. Emery?
We're not hiring right now.
Emery, it's Monica. Did someone make a motion on that, the religious freedom thing? I know we voted on it, but I didn't hear a motion in.
I thought Emery started off with it, but if not, I would make a motion to adopt the proclamation as read and also that we will have that Religious Freedom Day from here on out annually.
Okay, great. And then seconded?
Second.
Trish?
Thank you.
Take a vote, Emery?
We voted on it, but.
Okay, good. Great.
Okay. So once again, can I have a motion to add, to discuss and possibly take action on the Economic Development Director? Bob Finley made the motion. Rob and Egan seconded. Okay, discussion, I said it, we're not hiring. This is just one final wolf of it to get ready. Rob and Egan. You're on mute.
Just jumping down. I had to leave that part on mute. Jumping down to supervision received. Works under the general supervision of the First Selectman. Makes a whole sense. He works in. Are you, everybody there?
Yeah, okay, it was the second bullet, okay.
Yes, second bullet. And then the first one works in conjunction with the Economic Development Commission, but does not report to them. I remember we wanted to make that clear that they didn't. Just wording there, is that fine? Is that good? Everybody's happy with that? Something about it just kind of.
Kind of slapped you.
It's funny, yeah, I kind of read it. I didn't say anything, but I read it the same way. I feel like that bullet, that bullet should be first, the works under the general supervision of First Selectman first. And, and just works in conjunction with the Economic Development Commission and does not make a comment about reporting.
Yeah.
You know, even if you wanted to, you might say, I don't know, do, does she report to the First Selectman? I think that may.
We say works under the general supervision and reports to the First Selectman?
Yeah, and then this way you don't have to tell who it doesn't report to.
I almost feel like since that section is supervision received, the Economic Development Commission, the way that's writing is, has no supervision over them. They're, I'm going to say, at the same level, they're working in conjunction with each other. I would almost take that right out.
Do you want to take out that whole works in conjunction with them as well?
Yeah, I would say so. There was another, there was an earlier part where it mentions works in conjunction with, you know, land use and permitting and stuff like that. I would almost stick it in there where part of their responsibility is to work in tandem with the Economic Development Commission.
Is it works jointly with the Economic Development Commission? Maybe jointly is the word?
Yes, I mean, we, yeah, we want to make sure that they're, I mean, otherwise, what the heck's the point of the Economic Development Commission? I would say it's so that the public has got a commission that's overseeing, you know, so that kind of the interface for the people. I think that's kind of how we framed it in the past, so we want to have it, but they don't have, which, as we brought up, was one of the big issues in the past, was that they thought that the director should report to them. He did not, and that caused, you know, issues and conflict. So, and.
I'm sorry, it really should just be a list, like you were saying, of the Economic Development Director will work with. And I would add to the end of that and others as needed, just so it's, there's not a, it's more of a dotted line than a direct line.
Yeah, if something new springs up in the future, we have some new position that is tailor-made for that, that's where that slides right in. So, yeah, I would, I would eliminate that whole works in conjunction with the EDC, but not report to, get rid of that and move that the EDC is somebody that they work with in one of the earlier sections. Just as one of their responsibilities is to work with the EDC.
And to your point, Trish, now you don't put limitations on it. They can work with whomever.
Yeah. Okay.
Make a motion to amend?
Yep.
Yep, make a motion to amend as discussed.
Second by Bob Finley, all in favor? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Rory and I will get this over to Chris and have Chris change it and then send it back to us. How's that?
Yeah, otherwise I didn't see anything that jumped out.
Appointment is next.
Thank you, appointments? Have any? But I will give you a heads up that we, oh, can I say that word? We are in the process of putting the WPTA board. Rob and Bob. Thank you, appointments, tax refunds and abatements. You have in your packet the tax refunds and abatements, if you can just take a look at it. And let me know, make sure there are no issues or. Can I have a motion to accept the tax refunds and abatement?
Don't move, Madam Chairman.
Motion by Pat Lombardi. Second by Bob Finley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, transfers, there are no transfers in our packet. Correspondence in your packet, you will see that we have a memorandum, memorandum from Burchman and Moses regarding the executive order nine R, just an update on the modified tax deadlines. Oh, have the letter from the Governor Financial Officers, you know, award for financial receivment achievement, the AFRA that we received. We also have in our packet a letter from a resident, Jamie Brennan, regarding his farm on one twenty, is it one twenty-four Bunge Road? There has been a lot of discussion on Facebook about this, a lot of back and forth.
That was me.
Okay, a lot of back and forth on this. The Board of Select, there is nothing that I, as the First Selectwoman, there was nothing Kurt Miller as the First Selectman, Paul Roy as the First Selectman, Bob Kaskowski as the First Selectman, there is nothing we can do as First Selectman and there's nothing we can do as a Board of Selectmen. This is between Jamie and the Board of Assessors. There are rules and regulations in place under the General State Statutes. And he gave us a part of the General State Statute. The other part of the state statute that states what a farm is a farm, states that you must have an income of greater than fifteen, fifteen thousand dollars or greater or spend a greater amount of fifteen thousand dollars in investments in your farm. This is something the tax assessor reviews, reviews his records as well. And that may have been one of the findings that was not there. The only thing that Mr. Brennan can do, he's already wrote letters to the state as well, the state has looked into this as well. The only thing he can do is go appeal this through the tax abatement. And all the tax, is the tax abatement board is going to do is either reduce his taxes or not reduce his taxes. The tax assessor is the only one that can claim him as a farm declaration. And you must meet that other part is the way it was explained to us. There's nothing, you know, I read, well, we can bombard the office with letters and phone calls and emails, which I personally have gotten a bunch of Facebook messages for on my personal Facebook page. There's nothing I can do. I really wish there was, but we can't do anything about it. And this happens every five years. Okay.
I just wanted to throw it out there, in the letter, he makes reference to the predatory practice of the assessor. And is there anything legally we should be doing going back to him to refrain him from, I mean, at some point, a notification has to be made to him for him to, because he's, he's actually, you know, causing some problems with respect to Facebook, social media, and with not giving everybody the facts and the details. Is there anything we should be doing legally or is you just let this go on?
We shouldn't let it go on in my own person, and I'll let Attorney Leclerc answer this, but in my own personal opinion, I, I don't want to see his farm taken away, you know, no one's threatening to take his farm away. They're just taking away the classification for tax purposes.
Correct.
It's just for tax purposes. It's still his farm. Right? But you're right, the predatory practices, you know, you know, you know, whether you like the tax assessor, you don't like the tax assessor, the tax assessor really does not report to the First Selectman.
Yeah, and he's doing a job, and the job has rules, and these are the rules. So he, whether you agree with him is irrelevant.
Right. He does not report to the First Selectman. I have no ruling over him, neither does his board. He reports directly to the state, even though he's a town employee. And I will turn it over to Brian to, because he keeps looking at me like he wants to speak.
Yeah, Mr. Brennan has certain rights that he can exercise under the Connecticut statutes. If he's not satisfied with the classification by the assessor, there's the Board of Assessment Appeals and/or an appeal to Superior Court, you know, regarding his tax classification of his property. And the First Selectman's right, you have to, you know, farm is more than just having property that you call a farm to avoid paying taxes on it. Otherwise, perhaps everyone would claim that their extra acreage is a quote-unquote farm. It's made for farms in Connecticut, and if Mr. Brennan has a farm and falls under the statute, he's going to, he will be able to avail himself of that under the laws, but the assessor is determined, for whatever reason, he no longer qualifies as a farm under the state statutes. You know, Mr. Brennan, I'm sure knows or can find his rights under the laws to challenge that and should proceed accordingly.
So as the town of Seymour, can we communicate that those are his options? And that's it? Or, let me, I'm going to say the question, have we communicated that to him as the town of Seymour? Because I would like to reference, if we did do that formally, that's what I would reference on any Facebook post, that this is the formal response that went to Mr. Brennan.
I don't know.
He has options.
Rob, I think you're in.
Has he, has he gone through an appeals process? Because this has come up before multiple times and other meetings. So has he, to the best of our knowledge, put in a complaint to the assessor appeals? Has that happened?
To answer your question, Rob, yes, he has been a tax, a tax appeals board to appeal his taxes. Yes, he has. But he has not put in an appeal to the general, you know, to the Attorney General regarding his legalize, his classification as a farm.
Does he know, does he know to do that?
Well, I don't know that he know, you know, we cannot, you know, the town attorney's office represents the town. We cannot give legal advice to the taxpayers as to what they. what they should do and what, you know, how they should proceed, it's up to them to, you know, to.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying for you to give him advice, what I'm saying is if there's a, if there is a process that he should be following with the state as a recommendation, he needs to know that. He may not know, maybe he knows, maybe doesn't, I don't know. But it wouldn't hurt us to tell him that there is a process that he can follow, and this is what it is.
Right.
Right? I mean, I made it wrong.
He knows that he can file for a tax abatement because he has done that in the past.
No, I'm, I'm talking to the state, so he can be assessed.
Above our school.
I was gonna say, it's not our duty to do that.
I, I know what you're saying, Bob, I understand what you're saying. But if, if he can go and and this is gonna sound very cold-hearted and it's not meant to be, but he researched these regulations, he researched the general, the Connecticut general state statute. If he read a little further, he would have saw that the whole, I went on to the, on to the general state statutes. And Nicole researched it and I posted it and I put it right underneath it where someone said, we're gonna bombard the town with emails and phone calls.
I saw that.
And I put it right up there saying, this is why he's not considered a farm.
What town council said, you know, our job is not to be providing legal assistance okay, to taxpayers, okay, when it becomes a controversial issue, whether it's okay, about his abatement as farmland or any other matter, okay, that's not what his job is, it's not what our job is, okay? Mr. Brennan, I'm sure is aware of what he can do above and beyond the local level, and it is in his best interest to do that.
If we told him to do something and he did it and it went wrong, who do you think he'd blame?
It's not, it, well, it's not like you're telling him to do that, you're just, you're guiding him to a path that's gonna make sense for him. We don't have to do that, I'm just making the recommendation, because if this is gonna come up every time and we have an individual who isn't gonna understand the process, if we can point him in the right directions to say, you need to go to the state to get rescued. Because I don't, what I don't want, I don't want another note against our tax assessor for the wrong reasons.
Exactly, well, you know, he could be kind of he, he's, he's Joe, and that's it, yeah.
Just so people are aware, there are a lot of tax clinics and other kinds of civil clinics at the law schools in our area. I know that Yale and Quinnipiac have them, UConn. There's a lot of different ways for folks to get educated about these types of issues, so not to be it, it's not about being cold-hearted or cruel or whatever, Bob, it's just people kind of have to fend for themselves in this situation, but to your point, there should be something on the website about our tax appeals process, our, but he can go online and figure out the state stuff, we don't have to put links to that necessarily, but people should know what the basics of the processes are to make appeals in our community, especially for this type of designation. So with that, I agree with you, but I believe they're already on the website, aren't they, Anne Marie?
Well, yes and no, and Rob, I saw your hand up, but what I will say is this, is that the assessor should have given him a reason, not just per the CGS, he should have said this is why you're not a farm, ding 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 ding. He should have done that, he should have taken it one next, next step further, being human. Sorry, go ahead, Rob.
No, I just got distracted, forgot what I was gonna say. Oh, yeah, could we possibly get a canned response, like, like you mentioned, something short that we would all have a unified front, so if it, if we do get bombarded, you know, personal email or Facebook or anything, just something that says, I mean, the most important point, the Board of Selectmen does not influence this. And secondly, you know, you know, if you want to help out Mr. Brennan, let him know, you know, his next thing is at the state level or some legally accurate canned response that if I have to respond, I can use something that we would all have.
I'm sure we can have Brian write up something.
We can refer him to the state, you know, if you Google it or even, we can refer him to the State of Connecticut Judicial Branch has an entire website about Connecticut tax appeal law with citizens' guides, reports, forms, I believe, executive orders, all the state statutes. How to take a tax appeal.
Resident crying out for assistance, and it's gone time and time again, we've seen this before. I, I just think that at this point, I'd, I'd like to just be a little bit more diligent to give him good direction. I, I think it, it, it'd be good from a town perspective to get, just give him direction and let him go off and do that, let him go do what he needs to do, but I just give him the right direction, that's all.
I, I, I agree with you, and I, and I think we all are at, you know, even, even, you know, when he sent Nicole our, you know, Nicole, State Rep Nicole Clarissa Datria, the letter, she was calling me, I'm like, it's out of our hands. I can't do anything about it, she's like, what does he have to do? He's a farm, if you look, you know, per this, 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 and this, he's a farm. So then we went and we looked at the state statue and it says the whole fifteen thousand dollars, and she's like, why couldn't Joe just tell him that? And we all agree on that, and as an assessor, maybe he should be a little bit more people. Because he, he may not report to us, he may not, you know, report to me, but because he reports to the state of Connecticut.
He's representing the town of Seymour though, and how he does. And to, to Bob's point, I, I mean, I agree that we're not here to provide legal advice and there's gonna be limitations on how far we're gonna go. So once someone's given direction, that's it, you just keep sending the same information. And that's the end of it, there's only so much bad dream, I don't, I don't agree with the way Mr. Brennan is handling things because just sending email harassment, that's not gonna solve anything. But what I don't want us as professionals and sitting here as leaders, you don't want that to then be construed as we're the ones creating a roadblock simply by the nature of not providing the direction needed. So it doesn't need to be the information or, it doesn't need to be everything and promises. It's just, this is where you need to go, this is what you need to fill out, there's nothing more we can do on this end, these are steps you need to take. And it's on, it's now between you and whatever entity you're going through, regardless of how it lands. And that's the end of it, that we don't want to be the ones creating the roadblock because he's not handling things in a the manner that he really should be if he wanted really to get some assistance, because that's some of the problem too, right? You get a difficult person, it doesn't make you want to reach out and give a handshake. As far as, you know, let me help you, but let's not be those people, give, just give the direction with no promises, send him on his way. And just keep reiterating and resending if he keeps coming back. I mean, so that's all I can say.
I agree. Okay. So that was in the correspondence along with the check registry. Rory, did any public comment come in? Guides, Jamie Brennan.
I have not received any.
Selectman comment?
I just had a quick question on what we were just talking about very quickly, there's no conflict of interest based on other things that Mr. Brennan's involved in in town, is there? Like in capacities he serves or things he's doing, there's no conflict of interest in him making the requests to the town or nothing like that?
What is he on now? I know he used to be on planning and zoning, I don't know.
Isn't he still on there? Am I wrong?
For the best of my knowledge, he's not, Rory, do you happen to know?
As far as I know, his only official capacity is P and Z.
Planning and zoning.
Yeah, and he is, he is on it still.
Yeah. And there's no conflict?
I would defer to town council.
For, for purposes of going before the town's Board of Assessment Appeals or taking a tax appeal, really, the P and Z has no jurisdiction over that.
Okay.
Time, it could be a conflict, I suppose, as if he came before people are not, I suppose, if he, it would be a conflict if he came before his own board and, and, you know, was acting upon something affecting his own property. That's a unique interest to him, so that would be problematic.
Yeah, I get concerned, and this, this is not so much a reflection on Mr. Brennan, it just makes me think about situations we're all in, right, where we're making decisions as a very small community on our friends and neighbors, and it can get really sticky when it's somebody that's well-known or someone we all know, and I want to encourage everybody here on other boards, committees, in any capacity kind of to where I was speaking before about doing the right thing. We can only control ourselves and not others, but also making the right decisions for the right reasons and not because it's somebody we know or don't love, don't know or like or dislike in some capacity. So I'll end that soapbox right there. I get on them once in a while. Also, yesterday was Martin Luther King's Day, so I just want to acknowledge that you know, the diversity that we have in town and, and, you know, leadership and in building our boards and committees, it's so important because we can build upon each other's strengths and learn from one another. All the other comment I have, Anne Marie, someone was, or there was a group of people or someone maybe that was, you know, really great and in the holiday spirit and went around town doing some decorations, like on the stop signs, I don't know if anywhere else, but just want to mention whoever, if anybody knows, are you aware of who that was, or do we not?
So it was a, it was a bunch of moms and kids throughout the town, and they had asked beforehand if they can do it. And they were told, yes, providing they did not block the signs, they were, there was just a
I, well, I think it's, I think it's great because we were so festive and in a pandemic, like, I think it's wonderful, but we want to reach out to them and have them start picking it up now. Because now it's playing around, very trashy, and this is not Public Works has enough to do, they should have enough to do that. And I, I have really been tempted to start driving around doing it myself, but if we want people to get involved in things like this, we want to encourage that, but they've got to be responsible and drive around and do the pickup afterward too, it's not quite as fun.
So there was just a Facebook page, a Seymour Moms Facebook page that went out yesterday stating to please go and take the Christmas decorations down, but remember Valentine's Day and St. Patrick's Day. That we don't mind if you decorate, but please, you gotta take them down and change them out and not leave them on, so.
Yeah, because if they're not gonna do that, we can't be so nice to say yes all the time, but I would love to be able to see that spirit, so.
But they were waiting until the Christmas trees were getting picked up and we just had the final Russian Orthodox, I think it was Russian Orthodox Christmas, so now they're starting to pick those up and getting ready to decorate for Valentine's Day.
That's great, okay, I think that's all I have.
Pat Lombardi, you're next.
I have nothing, Madam Chairman, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Bob Finley?
No, just I'd be, be a little bit aware of the car thefts and break-ins and make sure that people are locking their doors, that was on my mind. And I, I did want to mention that, you know, we do have a change of guard at the helm and at the presidency tomorrow and the inauguration. And I, and I like the, the fact that Seymour is taking a neutral stance, and let's keep it that way. Be, everybody be calm and, and let's embrace the new leadership and let's move forward.
All working together, one big happy family. Rob Van Egan, you're next.
Um, yeah, I actually wanted to echo what both of, both Trish and Bob said, reflecting Martin Luther King Day. And the diversification, we can all learn from each other. And regarding the fact that tomorrow is gonna be inauguration, we have different ideas here, but I love this town because aside from comment sections every now and then in Facebook, there's usually pretty civil discourse, and I think we should, you know, whatever your leanings were, we can maintain that, and it's one of the things that I love about this town and why I'm gonna be very excited to raise my son in this town. Soon, it's coming soon. Uh, thank you.
Al Bruno.
Yeah, just wanted to say that it's, it's nice to see that the C I A C is considering some winter sports, we'll see where that goes, that's, that's promising. Hopefully the kids can get out there and compete and at least practice for a while. You know, really missing watching the kids compete and also missing my college hockey this winter very badly. Want to echo what, what Bob said about the break-ins, you know, you gotta lock your doors up. You have some issues, it's just, it ebbs and flows, let's all be smart. And yeah, I, I think that's, that's pretty much what I had to say, I wanted to thank everybody for picking up that garbage, I noticed the town is cleaner. I think people are taking more pride in our community since things have looked cleaner. So to Trish's point, it's great, when you go out and decorate, but I know it stinks to put it away. I had to do it last weekend, it took all last weekend to put everything away, it's always kind of a bummer, but yeah, I'm sure those, those mothers and the kids are gonna go out there and pick it up, I'm confident of that. I don't foresee any issues, you know, keep us posted on that, Anne Marie, if anything happens, if if there's assistance needed, I'm willing to go out with Trish and clean it up. But anyway, that's it, thanks a lot, and thanks to the folks who did that. It brightened a gloomy holiday, otherwise gloomy holiday, not being able to get together with family is kind of a bummer and a nice thought, it was happening around Connecticut, I noticed it in other towns too, it's very, a very nice gesture and didn't go unnoticed.
No, it was, it was great. Ryan?
Nothing, thank you.
Rory?
All set.
Okay. No, I, I think it was great, it went along well with the holiday lights theme. I think the decorating of the street signs went along well with that, I think, you know, the parade committee had a meeting and I went out and I thanked them all as well. And hopefully it's something we can do next year to carry out a tradition, as well as maybe decorate downtown some more. So Alex and the parade committee are really taking that bull by the horn and, and, and running it, which is great. So with that, I will, oh, there's one more thing, the, the assessments, I have one thing on the assessments. I know people are angry about their assessments. Um, my assessment went up, you know, all our assessments either went up, they went down even as Board of Selectmen members, right? The assessment has to be done every five years. There is nothing we can do about that, we asked the governor if we could postpone it because of the pandemic, and the governor said no. We had to go through with the assessment. The assessment doesn't take place until your 2022 grand list, it's not gonna take place on the 2021, no, 2021 grand list will come out in 20 22 billing. I understand people are all upset about that. We're not looking to raise taxes, normally it evens it out, and Trisha is gonna correct me if I'm wrong or not. You know, normally if our house taxes go up, our car taxes go down, I know it doesn't make a difference when you have a sixty-seven thousand, I think is what one lady told me her assessment went up. And I went, okay, it doesn't make a difference, you can always appeal your assessment through the tax appeals board, there is a process you can go through, if you're not happy with it, you can go through it. Um, but remember, raised ranches and ranches are very popular, the market has shown that. I went and I, I didn't believe my assessment, but excuse me, I went in and I put it, and it was within two thousand dollars. So that was, that was pretty close. I'm not happy about it, I wish we didn't have to do it, I wish we didn't have to have the revow. But we had to, we had no choice, and the town does this every five years. To someone's comment about, well, Seymour is not growing, our industrial park is filling, we're keeping businesses here. I just wish everybody would see other things besides the god-awful Tri-Town Plaza. Seymour does not revolve around the Tri-Town Plaza. We have stores downtown, we have store in the other plaza, we have stuff in our commerce, in our Commerce Park. We have more than just the Tri-Town Plaza. And I really wish residents would see that because we have no say over the Tri-Town Plaza either. We can beg, plead, beat up Specter, do whatever we want, but he doesn't have to do anything if he doesn't want to do anything. And there's nothing, again, that we as a town can do to him. It's private property. And people can talk about eminent domain, but we don't want to start going down that road. And so I have to say, have a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Motion by Trish, second by Bob Finley. All right, everybody have a good night, night all.
Night, everyone.
Congratulations on that baby.